Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Town Council's special meeting for Tuesday, June 26th. All councilors are present. I'd like to welcome Counselor Baumgartner to the fold. First item on the agenda is the public hearing, 2018-12, Public Hearing on an Ordinance to Establish Hours of Operation for BYOB Establishments. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town Council of the Town of Groton, Connecticut, on Tuesday, June 26, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Community Room 1, Town Hall Annex, 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, on the ordinance introduced at the Town Council meeting held June 5, 2018, entitled Introduction of an Ordinance to Establish Hours of Operation for BYOB Establishments, be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Groton. And I don't think I have to read the whole thing, do I? Okay. So, Mr. Burt, oh, I'm sorry. Dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 18th day of June, 2018, Betty McCauser, Groton Town Clerk. The proposed ordinance is available at the Town Clerk's office and on the town website, www.grotton-ct.gov. Mr. Burt, would you be so kind as to grab the hearing sheet? I forgot to get the sign-up sheet. I think we have at least one person signed up to speak on the BYOB ordinance. Thank you very much. And the first person signed up to speak is Robert McDade Jr. If you would please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If you have written comments, you can leave them with us as well, and we can include them in the public record.
My name is Robert McDade Jr., and my address is 1042 Vicuana Creek Road, apartment number 60. And I'm going to be talking about the BYOB ordinance. Hi, my name is RJ McDade, and I'm a youth advocate for GASP and a Groton City Police Cadet. I'm a resident of Groton, and I'm going to be a senior at Fitch High School. I'm speaking to you today in favor of the BYOB ordinance because I feel that it could help with preventing underage drinking and may also prevent driving under the influence. I believe that this ordinance can help protect the health and safety of Groton citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McDade. Are there any other citizens here who would like to speak on behalf of the BYOB hearing? Going once, twice. All right. Hearing is closed. And at this time, we will recess the Town Council's special meeting, and we are going to convene the Committee of the Whole Meeting to take care of business. We're going to have a bit of jumping around this evening. So, dabble it again. This is fun banging the gavel. So, I call to order the Town Council Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, June 26, 2018. Roll call, everyone is present. Calendar and Communications. Counselor Baumgartner, do you have any communications for the public or for the council?
I do. This past week, actually yesterday, the city pier in New London, the Connecticut Maritime Heritage Festival, held a press conference with folks, boards of the nonprofit, as well as local officials from the surrounding communities, to talk about the upcoming events from September 5 through the 9th, for, again, the festival that will bring in a few ships, including a destroyer, among many others. So, it's an event that brings in a tremendous number of individuals into our area. I know certainly in both New London and Groton, folks, whether it's Fort Griswold or at Fort Trumbull, can get around on the water taxi. So, it'll be a great time to bring your friends and family down on both sides of the river. And was very proud to speak on behalf of the Town of Groton, to celebrate their successes and discuss how we can be a great stakeholder. So, and that, I believe, is all.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
I attended three graduations this week. New London's graduation, NFA's graduation, Fitch's graduation. Also attended the candlelight vigil for families torn apart, held at the City of Mississippi Building. And thank you to all who came out and represented. And there will be another one in New London at 10:00 AM on...
30th.
30th. The 30th, Williams Street.
Williams Park.
Williams, thank you. And we also did the, did we talk about? I can't remember. One more thing, I think. I'm sorry. We had the joint committee meeting, and did we not have our liaison, liaison, I can't say the word, sorry, guys, liaison meeting with RTM, Board of Ed, Town Council, the City Council, on, last week, or two weeks ago. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
I also attended the RTM Board of Ed Town Council Liaison Meeting. I attended a Fitch Booster Club fundraiser, which seemed very successful, down at Abbott's. I went to the Trails Committee meeting, where we heard in-depth from Mr. Fitzgerald, I believe his name is, who has since been in touch with me and would like, is going to be sending me info on water access, that he believes signs belong somewhere in town. And I did go to the shred-it at the library, where they have papers to shred for free, which was enormously helpful for me.
Counselor Heath?
On Tuesday, June 19, Counselor Schmidt and myself attended the Personnel Committee, and we appointed Don Levinson to be a permanent member of the Historic Committee. We also reappointed Natalie Billing to the Community Development Advisory Committee, and Nancy Codien was reappointed to the Housing Authority. For the Board of Assessment Appeals, BAA, we appointed Don Marchand. So, that's all.
Thank you. Counselor O'Brich?
I attended the awards ceremony at the Vocational Technical School, El Vaite Grasso, and I attended a gathering for the care of children at the border. And I've received several calls asking what we're doing with the BYOB ordinance.
Counselor Atwater?
I had a call from a citizen asking about the maintenance of Pequot Woods. He likes to walk there, and I guess there's a lot of trees down. He called the town and asked if he could clear it. They said no, that take pictures of it. And he said that there were so many, he didn't bother. So, but raises the question in my mind, who is responsible for clearing Pequot Woods or clearing the sidewalks? And when I'm out walking, there's a lot of overgrowth. Is that the homeowner? Is that the town?
I think it depends on the location, but could you forward the gentleman's contact information, Mr. Burt, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Counselor Schmidt?
I did attend the Personnel Committee on June 19.
And Counselors Perry?
Oh, I attended the seminar on economic, fundamentals of economic development, presented at New London High School last week. I'd mention that only to tell you that there was good information that was passed on. And I have a collection of their PowerPoint slides, which I will share with any counselor, or for that matter, anyone else who would like to see them.
Thank you. I received several bits of communication to go to the gentleman that Counselor Franco spoke of. We have been in contact with Mr. Fitzgerald. We actually had a meeting with him earlier this year, and we will be scheduling a meeting this summer to go over the coastal access signage. We had correspondence from former Assistant Town Clerk Sally Whitney regarding cost-of-living adjustments, which I believe is why we have such a nice crowd here tonight. I heard from a person who is having issues with a zoning issue in their neighborhood, and Mr. Burt and the appropriate staff are dealing with that. So, things are moving along. Later this evening, we will be hearing from our town attorney with an update on the merit property in the middle school, Groton 2020 Project. I attended the Fitch High School graduation, which was wonderful. Lots of potential in that group of kids, a very nice group of kids. And I also just wanted to state that the summer food service is in effect, the summer meals throughout town, and you can find that on the Groton website, the school website, and on the town website as well. All right. Mr. Burt, do you have anything for us?
This was our first agenda packet with the new software, so that went pretty smoothly. The full functionality won't be unlocked until July 1st, is when some of the online features start to be accessible. So, it'll be a process, but we got through this first stage very well. So, great job to Nikki Breziden and the IT Department and everyone else involved. We had an internal meeting yesterday about the uses of the Fitch Middle School, trying to, I know it's been a big interest of the council, trying to put together a plan for the future. We're putting some costs together, and I'll have more information to discuss with you in the next few weeks, but we're making that a priority to try to get something to you for discussion. And then, RFP for Groton Heights goes out this Thursday, so that'll be released to developers to have something done with that building. I think it's a 60-day turnaround, so hopefully we'll see something move in that pretty fast. So, that's what I have.
Thank you. All right, we are on to item four, approval, 2018-11, approval of the Committee of the Whole Minutes, May 16th, May 22nd, June 5th, and June 11th.
I make a motion to all minutes listed on our packet.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Perry. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Counselor Atwater?
I just wanted to note, on the meeting of May 16th, the special meeting, on page two, it says, "Teachers Were Note Eligible to Participate," and I think it should be not eligible to participate. I'd like to make that correction.
So, you're on page two?
Page two.
Of May 16th. Teachers Were Note. Okay, I got you. So, it's a spelling. Okay. Great. Anyone else have comments or concerns on the minutes? There's quite a bit here, so. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of May 16th, May 22nd, June 5th, and June 11th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. We are on to new business, item number five. This is 2018-1, Bill Memorial Library Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Application. And at this point, we recess the COW, and we go back to the Town Council's special meeting.
First, you need a recommendation to meet that.
Okay, great. So, then we'll go to Counselor Baumgartner for Bill Memorial Library Neighborhood Assistance.
Second page.
It's actually, not yet, we have to do this first. We have to do the COW first.
So, I'd like to make a motion. So, I'd like to make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the Bill Memorial's Library, Library's 2018 Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Application.
Moved by Baumgartner, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heath. Okay, and if you notice, the page after that, it goes into great detail with the grant application. And if you go to page two of Mr. Reiner's, go with Mr. Reiner's, Mr. Reiner's memo to us, "We have two alternatives, to do nothing, or to schedule the public hearing and approve the proposal for the energy efficiency improvements to the Bill Memorial Library under the 2018 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act, and staff recommends alternative two." Is there any discussion about the two alternatives? Give everybody a minute. Okay. Counselor Schmidt?
Well, I just moved that we schedule a public hearing and approve the proposal for the energy efficiency improvements to the Bill Memorial Library under the 2018 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act.
Moved by Schmidt?
Seconded by Tom.
Seconded by Heath?
We've already had the public hearing, and this is actually for action now.
Okay, so, we're recommending, Counselor Schmidt has recommended that we do alternative two.
This is, that earlier cover sheet from 13th, where the first person interviewed.
So, we've discussed this in committee, and so now we can recess out of the COW and go back to Town Council and act on it now that it's been through COW. So, I'm going to recess the COW. And we are going back to, I'm going to reconvene the Town Council meeting. So, now, I am reconvening the Tuesday, June 26, Special Meeting of the Groton Town Council. New business, item three. This is 3-1, the Bill Memorial Library Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Application. And this is where we need the resolution read. Counselor Parker?
Resolution approving the 2018 Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Application for the Bill Memorial Library, whereas the Town of Groton has received a proposal from the Bill Memorial Library for the 2018 Neighborhood Assistance Act to achieve tax credit savings on an energy efficiency proposal for their heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system, and whereas the Town of Groton Office of Planning and Development Services supports the energy efficiency proposal from the Bill Memorial Library, and acknowledges that the post-program review will be the department's responsibility, and whereas the Town Council had held a public hearing on the Bill Memorial Library Neighborhood Assistance Act Application on June 1, 2018, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council hereby approves the Bill Memorial's Library Application under the 2018 Neighborhood Assistance Act Program. I so moved.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Is there a discussion on this grant application? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on 2018-1, Bill Memorial Library Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the Town Council's special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Parker, to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning the Town Council's special meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. So, the Town Council's special meeting is adjourned. Okay, now we go back to the easy stuff. So, now I'm going to reconvene the COW. And now we are on 5B. Correct, Mr. Burt?
Correct.
All right, 5B is 2018-2, Cost of Living Adjustments for Retirees. And we have Mr. Cecilia with us this evening to do the presentation. If you'd like to come to the table, sir. And if you could just be sure that you use the microphone, because it's being recorded, and that's the only way your speech will be picked up, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. My name is Matt Cecilia. I'm a pension actuary with the Pension Service, located in North Haven, Connecticut. Been a pension actuary for over 18 years. Our firm has been in existence since 1964. We manage over 1,500 pension plans, including approximately 150 defined benefit pension plans. I was asked to do some analysis pertaining to a couple different items related to the defined benefit plan, or the retirement system, as it's referred to. And so, I'm going to break that into two components. The first has to do with analysis related to a proposed or a potential cost-of-living adjustment for retirees. If I may, I'm just going to pass out some information.
Shane, is it being picked up back there okay?
Some of the information I'm going to say today, you will already be familiar with. However, some may, some may not, with some terms. So, bear with me if some of the information is already known. I just want to make sure things are as clear and concise as possible. So, as it refers to on the agenda under item 5B, I was requested to perform some cost-of-living analysis. And when I did that, the first information that I was provided was current data from the town's current actuary, Hooker and Holcomb, and the most recent valuation report, as well as a copy of the pension plan document. When looking at the analysis performed by the town's actuary, the first thing that became apparent before I addressed the COLA analysis, the potential increase in the cost for implementing the COLA, was to look at some of the underlying assumptions, making up the plan's liability. The biggest assumption that affects the plan's liability, and this liability, of course, appears on the balance sheet, your CAFER, your Certified Annual Financial Statement Report. And the biggest assumption that's used to determine this liability has to do with interest rate. I noticed that Hooker and Holcomb was currently using a 7.5% interest rate, which, in my actuarial opinion, is very high, especially, you know, based on recent, the recent market that we've been in, especially over the past decade, with lower rates. The towns and municipalities, the towns and cities that we manage, those plans, we currently use rates between 6.5% and 7%, although the only one that is at 7% is one that we recently took over from the same actuary a couple of years ago, and we have implemented a recommendation to lower that rate to 6.34. I mention this because with interest rate and plan liability, it's an inverse relationship. So, the lower the rate, the higher the liability. And the higher the liability, the higher the annual cost, which is referred to as the actuarial determined contribution, used to be referred to as the ARC, or the Actuarial Required Contribution. They're one in the same, it's just a new terminology. So, before presenting the, preparing the COLA analysis, I thought it was first prudent to tell you the true cost that you should be expecting, not just from this COLA increase, but also from a potential lowering of the interest rate associated with valuing the plan. The letter that I have provided to you is dated May 21, 2018. The first section looks at the potential of the effect of lowering the rate from 7.5% to 6.5%. I prepared it by all the divisions, just to kind of show you what the effect would be. As you can see, for example, on the bottom of page one, the town's subtotal, taking into account six divisions, the increase alone in the annual contribution that we would recommend would be $529,800 due to this rate change. On the second page at the top, it continues with the other divisions, and the Board of Ed, the firefighters, and whatnot. In all total, I'm expecting approximately a $700,000 increase. The specific number is 697,170, the estimated number. That's the increased annual contribution that I would expect by reducing the rate, by reducing your rate from 7.5% to 6.5%. One question that I'm often asked is, do you need to flip the switch and make it, you know, immediately? The answer is no. You can make a, you can adopt a funding policy that gradually transitions or lowers it. So, for example, if, after analysis by an actuary working with the investment, the investment consultant, the investment advisor, let's say a rate, for example, that's determined should be 6.5% or 6.75%, for example, rather than making a big dramatic change all at once, you can phase it in, let's say, 25 basis points per year, with the ultimate goal of the ultimate rate that's determined, again, by the investment advisor and the actuary. The reason I'm looking at 6.5% is because the initial COLA analysis performed by your current actuary, which was prepared in early April, used the same 7.5% rate that the July 1, 2017 valuation report used. However, two weeks later, less than two weeks later, your current actuary sent a letter addressing something else, and mentioned in it that it's the desire to lower the rate from 7.5% to 6.5%. That's why I perform my analysis, to mostly kind of say, when you're looking at this COLA analysis, which I'll get to in a sec, you also need to account that, you know, your actuary, or whomever it may be, is going to suggest a higher contribution going forward. I feel it's a better representation of the plan's liability, and the anticipated contribution will better fund this plan to increase its sustainability. That being said, Exhibit B of my letter actually looks at the COLA analysis. And the COLA analysis that I was asked to analyze is a 2% increase for anyone who had retired five years or over, so anyone who retired July, before July 1, 2013. I've also prepared a second analysis. This was just on my own, just to show that there are options out there. It's in no way recommending this, it's just to show this analysis. The second analysis says a 1% increase for people that retired five to 10 years ago, and a 2% increase for people who retired over 10 years ago. And at the bottom of page two of my letter, column A is the 2%, flat 2% for anyone who retired over five years ago. The estimated subtotal for the town divisions is approximately 65,000. Now, it reminds our, this is valued at the 6.5% interest rate. So, the 65,000 is on top of the 697,000 that is listed above. If you turn to the last page, that brings into account all the other divisions, again, Board of Ed, fire, everything. And in total, under column A, I'm estimating 83,000 and change to implement a COLA. So, I feel that this letter represents the true cost of implementing a cost-of-living adjustment.
So, just to clarify, the figures on page three, for the increase in town contribution using the 6.5% interest rate, the 83,000 or the 65,000, we need to add those to the 697,000 from page two?
That's correct. If you were to make a, you know, a change from the 7.5% to 6.5% within one year.
Okay, Mr. Burt, one second.
We're really just talking about the first page, though. Here, we're really not talking about that second page.
Can you explain that, please?
The whole discussion's been, you know, firefighters have their, you know, their, the Vicuana Fire has their own board that would request that. I think we're concerned with the town employees, that's what we've been focusing on.
So, then we would add the, either the 83 or the 65 to the 529.
So, what I would suggest there is the figures at the bottom of the first page and the bottom of the second page. Because if we're just looking at the town subtotal, in the bottom of the first page, it's 529,800. Bottom of the second page represents the town subtotal, column A, of 65,130. I would say those are the two figures that we'd be looking at.
So, then the 529,8 from the bottom of page one, and then your two scenarios that you're presenting to us are either 65,000 or 51,000, depending on the percent of those two.
That's correct.
So, then you're looking at about 530 and 60, almost 640. Thank you, Mr. Atwater.
Does anyone have any additional questions?
Are there other questions at this point?
I was just going to mention, you know, the retirement board did move the, I think, Cindy, did they move it a few years ago, and in the last few years, it's down a little bit? So, it had been higher than the 7.5% that was lowered. And I know there's been some discussion on lowering it more. I doubt we'd get there in the next four years, but it might be a little longer than that. But the eventual goal would be to get more in that range, the 6.5. But it'll probably take longer than the four years, I would imagine.
Did you want to come and speak, Ms. Landry, or? Thank you. Finance Director Landry is joining. I assume you know Mr. Cecilia.
I just wanted to mention that the actuarial, when we had the actuarial evaluation done a couple of years ago, our actuary at that time had told us that we needed to consider taking the rate, reducing the rate. And I think that it wasn't an 8.5, it went to 7.25, and it's, I believe we're at 7.5 now. But it was under their recommendation, and the town in the board, the retirement board does realize that that rate needs to be come down. But as you can see from his presentation, to do it in a drastic fashion would be a huge increase in the contributions to the retirement fund. And with that under, with that knowledge, we tried to, not reducing so much to make such a huge hit to the contribution, because that's what will come up at budget time. But we are aware of it, and our actuary is aware of it.
Counselor Atwater?
I don't know if this is for Cindy, or John, or whomever, but if the actuary has been using 8.5% for a number of years, and then finally went to 7.5%, what has been the investment return on the funding of this? I mean, clearly, 8.5% to me seems outrageously high, but that's my own opinion. And if you, if you, your return on your investments are 6%, And if you, if you, your return on your investments are 6% and you're assuming eight and a half percent, you're just going further and further into the hole. And I just moved back to Connecticut, and I think that's probably some of the problem that the state is having, is that they just are not facing up to reality. So, has, has the, has the investment return been anywhere near the assumptions of eight and a half percent?
I do not think in the past couple of years it has, but I think the board has recognized that and is trying to bring that rate down. But again, as he had indicated, to bring it down a, well, 1% from seven and a half to six and a half, I think you came up with almost like $600,000 increase, over and above whatever the actual report, the annual contribution comes out. It would be a massive increase to the retirement fund. So, that we're just trying to do it in increments, and recognizing that it does need to be done.
Counselor Parker?
So, if the suggestion is to move it a quarter each year, basically, to get down to six and a half, starting from what date? That's my question.
Well, really, this is the analysis of, you know, what happens. I don't make the recommendation the council would make a determination based on my analysis or another actuary's analysis. But in my presentation, to show, to illustrate it, I did the full switch of 1%, and I mentioned before that if you do a written, adopt a formal written policy of, okay, we're going to take this approach, for example, exactly what you said, 25 basis points per year, so that over four years, that's one path you could take, but it's certainly not, it's not the one that has to be taken, it's one potential path.
So, okay. Anyone else? Counselor Heath?
So, assuming the 7.5% interest rate return, what's the total unfunded liability estimate versus a 6.5% return?
You're with me one sec. So, this is July 1st, 2017, the most recent actuarial valuation report. The unfunded actuarial liability is approximately 19,100,000, 19,130,000. And just looking, are you just looking at the town subtotal? Would that be correct?
Yes, I believe that's what Mr. Bert suggested, because the fire departments have their own.
And I would estimate this is a ballpark figure. I could, I have the information back in my office, but it would probably be another eight and a half million in liability added to the plan.
That's the total?
Correct.
So, if we take it, just to clarify, so if we take it, we drop the expectation from seven and a half to six and a half, our unfunded liability goes up by 8.5 million?
Just let me just double check.
Okay.
Bear with me one sec.
Is that where you were going?
I'm sorry. Let me amend that figure. Just doing it quick here. Excuse me, I misspoke. I'd like to amend it to say six, approximately 6 million. I had the wrong number of years in here. A more exact figure could be provided at a later time.
Thank you. Counselor Heath, did you have further questions for Mr. Cecilia?
No, thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for either Director Landry or Mr. Cecilia? Counselor Zepari?
Now, I'm talking about, there are two different things we've been talking about. One is the reduction of the interest rate, the anticipated interest rate from 7.5 to 6.5%. And the second is a 2% cost of living increase. And we have some figures on the, on both of these recommendations, but the figures we don't have is currently, what is the low, the high, and the median payment to each of the union groups that's going to get, that will get a 2% increase?
Okay. I can do that analysis. I think it's a fair question.
So, just to clarify, please, the 6 million additional, does that include if we went to a 2% cost of living adjustment and dropped it to 6.5?
Sorry to cut you off there.
That's right.
The 6 million is just for the change in rate?
Change in rate.
That's correct. The change from seven and a half to six and a half.
Okay. Is there any idea what our liability increases if we do the 2%?
I mean, these are ballpark figures, but approximately a 750,000.
Per year?
Correct.
I'm sorry?
750,000, approximately.
That's the increase to the unfunded liability.
Increase to the unfunded liability, correct? That was the...
For the cost of living adjustment?
Correct. For the 2%, yes.
Yes, Director Landry?
I just wanted to clarify or add, I believe that cost of living increases are always effective July 1, and the actuarial report that you had was as of July 1 of 17, so the next one would be as of July 1 of 18, so I think this wouldn't come into play until the actual report of July 1 of 19.
Municipalities are only required to have a formal actuarial evaluation every two years. I'm not sure if the town, if you're a town...
We do it every year.
You do it every year.
Every year.
So, this would become applicable.
July 1 of 17.
Of 18, July 1 of 18. If we were looking to...
But I'm thinking, I'm, what I'm saying is if the COLAs are effective July 1 of 18, the information that we're providing for the study that's dated July 1 of 18 is actually for the year that's just ending this month. It would not reflect those COLA increases.
The, yes, the COLA analysis, if I'm understanding your question correctly, the COLA analysis was based on data as of July 1st, 2017?
Yes.
And...
That, that report there.
This report here, yep, as stated in here from the, from the valuation report, which is the most current data.
So, the impact for the COLAs would be on a study that was effective for July 1 of 19, based on what we had paid out as of June 30th of 19?
If you're, are you referring to, because you budget everything end of year?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, then I would agree.
Yes. Because the COLAs would only be effective July 1 of 18.
Okay. Mr. Bert had something?
I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on a couple of things. For one, if we change the percent of interest rate, that would affect all, that's for the entire plan then, right? Fire departments, everything, and that would affect their contributions, the ledge light, fire departments, Board of Ed, so if you change that, that would be, I believe that has to go through the retirement board also. So, this isn't just a council action, it goes through the retirement board for looking at those interest rates. But the COLAs can be given just for the town employees, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's correct.
Are there other questions? So, you're going to get back to Counselors Zepari with that information that he requested, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And if anyone else has questions for either Director Landry or Mr. Cecilia, we should forward them to Mr. Bert, and then he can get them in turn to the two of them. Is there anything, Mr. Bert, that you needed from us this evening on this particular item?
No, I mean, whenever the council's ready for a direction, maybe we have a question out there. If there's one, I'll share it with the council and we'll bring it back up. If that's okay.
Okay, so, yes, Counselor Obray?
I'm just wondering, you do this for all the towns, I assume?
Yes.
In other towns, is there usually an unfunded balance?
Uh, yes.
And it would run something like what, the situation we're in?
Well, what I would say, there are two main categories of towns and cities, especially throughout the state of Connecticut, those who make their annual contribution and those who don't. If you're a town that has consistently made their annual contribution, then you're staying on the right track. Whereas we've, we've serviced and we've done some analysis for towns who don't make their requi, their, they used to be called actuarial required contribution, however, there's really no law, it's not private sector, you don't have ERISA backing it up, saying that these are required, that's why they changed the terminology to actuarial determined contribution. So, to summarize, it's really those towns who make their payments and those who don't. And if you're in the former group, you're on the right track. It is very common to have unfunded liability, but the ones that don't make their contributions, the unfunded liability is significantly higher.
Thank you. Counselor Attwater?
I guess I'd just like some reassurance from somebody that we're not going further and further in the hole. I mean, it just, the more you change these assumptions, if you're not making the contributions to back it up, you're just getting further and further behind. And I don't know whether that's the case or not. Maybe our investments are earning 12, 15%, and it's not a problem, but I, I would like some assurance that, that we're going in the right direction.
A lot of times, I think that's a good point, is we prepare projections for a lot of our clients and, you know, other non-clients that need assistance. So, yeah, it's always good to have an idea of where you're going. Absolutely.
And at that, seven and a, or at the seven and a half percent, we're at what, 80-something, mid-80% funded, which is considered very good in Connecticut. However, we know once we adjust down to eventually six and a half percent, we're probably about 10% less funded, maybe somewhere in that ballpark, but which is still very, pretty good for Connecticut. We're still in that high end for funded, but it's, it's something we want to address sooner rather than later. We want to have a plan.
And, yes, Minister Landry?
The town of Groton has always made their required annual contribution.
Just on the topic of liability with our OPEP, with our other post-employment benefits, we're the, like, the third highest funded, we're only about third, I don't know, 30% funded, but that's the third highest in all of Connecticut, so we're, you know, so we're doing well, so.
So, Director Landry, do you have a recommendation for us as far as how we should reach the lower percentage rate? Do you recommend taking a quarter percent each year? Do you recommend taking the leap and going all at once? What's your suggestion?
I would think that it's actually a decision of the retirement board, and we did reduce it recently, when the actual, this actual actuarial report came out, and when the one that comes out this year's ending, and when we have the new July report, I'm sure that recommendation would be, again, but because of the significance of the increase to the contribution, my own personal recommendation would be not more than a quarter percent. And we have had those projections presented to the retirement board, and they are significant, as you have seen, he has also reported to you. So, much as you'd like to make, you know, a 1% reduction, it's just, it's really costly.
Let me get some historic data and returns for you, then I can present that to you.
Yep. Okay. Counselors Zepari?
A quarter percent per year, we're talking about trying to get $2 million, so that would be the difference between, no, the difference is, by, the difference between seven and a, and a half and six and a half is 59, is 529,800, the bottom right figure. So, if we did a quarter of that every year, we'd be talking about increasing taxes to the population, the taxpayers of Groton, by $125,000 each year. Is that right?
The, the, to refer, address your first question on the effect of a quarter percentage, then yes, it wouldn't be exactly 25% of this, but it would be approximate. How that money is generated, I would refer, I would request the counselor, Mr. Bert, to address it.
My arithmetic was very rough, too.
Fair enough.
Just wanted to get a ballpark feel in what we're considering.
Yeah, I would agree.
Are there any other questions for either Mr. Cecilia or Ms. Landry? Yes, Counselor Obray?
I was just wondering, maybe John, I'm sorry, the manager could share with us. I'm not familiar with the retirement board. Maybe in the future, we could know who was part of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much for coming out. Thank you for the information, and if the counselors have questions, then we'll forward them to Mr. Bert. Thank you very much. Okay, so, let me see. Now, we are on 5C, 2018-3 Retirement Plan Options, and Mr. Cecilia is staying with us for this, I believe, as well, correct?
Yes. Oh, wait a moment till everyone has...
Thank you. Again, one for the minutes. There you go.
Thank you. Why thank you?
Because you're gracious and sweet. We need to switch. So, everyone has the analysis from Mr. Cecilia, so we'll turn it back to you. If you want to just begin your presentation, please?
Absolutely, and I do have some additional material, but I'll pass that out afterwards.
It's, it's difficult to hear, Mr. Cecilia, if people in the seats are speaking, please? Thank you.
The second analysis that I was asked to prepare talks about plan design, the plan design of the defined benefit pension plan. The, the objectives I've provided, the summary, really what some of the objectives are is we want to make these defined benefit plans more sustainable, and I'll get into a little more detail about what that means, but right now, they're very costly, they can be, and we want to do two things. We want to propose two different designs that would still be offering a defined benefit plan, so you can attract good talent for the different departments in your town, but not have just such a large hit on your balance sheet right before people retire. Through my experience, you know, a lot of, several of the municipals through the state of Connecticut are trying to make changes for new hires to not have the, not have a defined benefit plan at all, instead have them a defined contribution plan, a 457B plan. Essentially, it's a 401K plan for governmental. I'll just call it a DC or defined contribution plan. But here, the two proposals that I've come up with is two different designs and, for a defined benefit plan, and then layering on a DC plan as well. These are in no, by no means the exact numbers that need to be adopted, if at all. It's more of an illustration to kind of get you to understand there are different options out there, and to see if any of these warrant further consideration. So, my main objectives is to have more consistent budgeting figures, not vast changes of swings in liability. We want to reduce risk and volatility, and some of what we're, what I'm going to propose here does that. And, I mean, we, essentially, we want cost containment. We want these plans to be well-funded. We don't want to see cities and towns get in hot water for not planning ahead, you know, properly, if you will. I mean, there's a lot of variables that come into play with these plans. They were set up, for the most part, decades ago, and now we're at a point where a lot of them are really putting stress on town and city financials. The, the current formula, there, what I'm going to present to you is essentially, there are two main kind of defined benefit plans. The first is called an annuity plan, or a traditional annuity plan. The second is a cash balance plan. An annuity plan essentially has three components, and it's what you currently have. It's a certain percent of pay times a certain, it's a percent, a percentage times pay times service. Straightforward. You work somewhere 30 years, you make such and such, you know, amount, that pay, or average few years, times the service, times that percent, you start getting that benefit upon retirement. Your current defined benefit plan is standard for one that's been around for a while, where that average pay is based on the final few years. So, what happens is, and you can see on our Chart A, on the Chart A that I prepared, the green line looks at the current... green line looks at the current DB plan, the defined benefit pension plan, and again, that's 2% times average, final average pay times service. Now, the reason that balloons so much towards the end, right before retirement, is because the increased pay gets applied over all years of service. So someone's been there 30 years and retires, and they have a few, you know, they work overtime, they've really put in a lot of extra time right before retirement, and that their benefit can increase significantly, and thus the liability can increase significantly. Analysis that I like to use sometimes is, think of a mortgage payment with a balloon payment at the end. You're constantly paying along the way, trying to get ready to, you know, you're doing the right thing, you know, making the payments along the way, and all of a sudden, boom, there's a big increase at the end, and that can create difficulty on the balance sheets for municipals. So the two plans, the first one is represented with the blue line, calling it a hybrid DB plan. The main change that we've made here is instead of using the final few years of pay, we're looking at the average of the career pay. So the final, that will get rid of that balloon potential of that liability. You'll still have a defined benefit plan in place, again, to attract good, you know, workers that want to work, you know, that will, obviously, it will create less of a staffing issue than some of the towns are seeing that are just implementing a 457B plan, but the reason it will cost less, and that's the blue line, is because you're using a career average pay, and that can significantly reduce the planned liability. In this scenario, we're also changing the 2% multiplier to 1.5%. This is just for illustrative purposes only. Still on chart A, the red line represents something called a cash balance pension plan. This is another kind of defined benefit plan. Long story short, it's a hybrid plan in and of itself, meaning it has components of a DB and a DC plan. A DB plan because it's backed by the town, the town makes contributions on the behalf. However, it's a DC plan because the, it's balance-based, it's no longer based on an annuity. Explaining to employees, you know, we get the question a lot of, how much is my benefit worth? In a traditional annuity plan, well, it's the actuarial jargon, present value of accrued benefits discounted from 65, factoring in mortality and interest, I mean, you know, five words in, you're lost. Cash balance plan is based on balances, as I mentioned, so it's very similar to looking like a 401K plan, a beginning balance, a certain interest that's applied to that beginning balance, a contribution made by the town, and an ending balance. The difference is, is that it's a guaranteed interest rate, we usually suggest a flat 4%, so everyone's account gets rolled forward with 4%. Based on the formula, a certain contribution is made for those people, and they have an end of year balance. They receive annual benefit statements from us for the plans that we administer. Employees like them because they're easy to understand, but municipals also like them because, you'll see in the red line, there's a lot less variability with them, because this is no longer looking at final pay, this is no longer looking at career average pay. People are getting a certain percentage based on each year of pay. It has a feel of a 401K plan, but one thing I'll add is in this proposal, I used a 4% interest rate, just a standard flat one, trying to simplify. So what that means, though, is that really when you're investing, your target's now 4%, which means if desired, you can take a more conservative approach. Currently, under the current defined benefit plan, as noted earlier, the target's 7.5. As Counselor Atwater pointed out, is if you return 6%, still not bad, but that's a loss. If you recommend a cash balance plan and your target's 4%, you get 6%, obviously, that's a gain. You'll see in my analysis here that a lot of times a cash balance plan costs more early on for new hires, but what it does protect against are those large liability increases for the longer-service employees right before retirement, and that's frankly, one of the main reasons why pensions are having trouble in other towns and cities. I'm also going to provide a additional reading material on the cash balance plan that you can look at later, but essentially, that's, that's the story. These additional, these initial exhibits show a starting salary of $50,000 increased, and I, you know, increased with 2.25%, plus the applicable steps for those divisions that have it. I'm also going to pass out $75,000 and $100,000 starting salaries, again, just for illustrative purposes. One thing you will notice is the graphs are exactly the same, it's just a higher benefit for someone making more, but the curves and the cost for the plan based on percent of pay are identical. Chart B, if I may, and feel free to stop me at any point unless you would prefer to have questions at the end. This is just expanding on chart A, this is looking at the defined benefit plan only, and it's looking at the potential benefit at the end of the day for a sample person retiring. You can see the different amounts under the three different scenarios, and those currently, in this, you know, scenario here, you can see the green amount is based on, you know, the current formula, the blue and red are based on the two proposals, the career average annuity plan and the cash balance plan. But I will point out, as you can see here, we're still talking about a very good benefit, we're still talking about an estimated lump sum of at least $380,000. So, these are very good benefits, and they, I believe they'll still be attractive to get good talent. Chart C has to do with, one of the things towns and cities really identify is, well, what is the, the annual contribution per person? And the annual contribution here, under the current plan, the green line, the red plan is the cash balance, and so the cash balance, again, to take a quick step back, this is a, just for illustrative purposes, we used a very high rate. A lot of times, cash balance plans have a lower rate, but what I mean by this is, for this analysis, we looked at a 10% annual, 10% of pay, excuse me, 10% of pay being put into someone's account. And even by do, by putting in 10%, plus an additional 2% defined contribution, contribution for the red line, you're still providing, it's still less than what you're currently doing for the current plan, and it's much less, it's a much more linear increase. The final chart D has to do with, the same as chart C, going from dollar amount per person, per employee, of what the contribution would be, 2% of pay, because this, of course, is another item that towns and cities are very interested in. And the current DB plan, offset by employee contributions, which is something that, again, could be adjusted. For this particular individual, I use kind of an average person based on the average data that we had, is approximately 5.5% of pay. It's actually 9.5% of pay, but I'm offsetting it by the 4% that the employee is making. Some of the older employees, this is closer to 12 and 13% of pay. The other plan, plans here, the hybrid plan, and plus I did a 1% DC contribution, you can see it significantly decreases. I just, again, I just put these DC numbers just to get something on there, to raise, you know, raise this idea of putting some into a DC plan. A lot of people push for DC plans as well, and it's actually, a quick side note, it's a great supplement to a defined benefit plan. It's also good for municipals because the employees are getting a certain percent of pay put into their accounts, that they're able to invest a quarter, how they would like. It also transfers the risk from the, from the town to the employee, because the, now the assets are based on their own individual investments. But one of the main benefits, of course, about a defined contribution plan is that the liability doesn't appear on the balance sheet. So the more, because, of course, a defined benefit liability does appear on the balance sheet, so the more you can get into it, and that's why a lot of towns now are currently proposing no DB plan for new hires, just DC. However, for this analysis, I didn't go that route, I did a combination of the two. The additional slides and information I'll pass out, provide further information on here, but a few of my quick conclusions, I appreciate everyone's time, I'll be quick, is, you know, if you change from the current formula to the hybrid proposal, that's the career pay plan, it will reduce your contributions going forward. It'll still be a good plan, but it will reduce your annual ARC, or actuarial determined contribution. Switching to a cash balance hybrid plan, it reduces fluctuations, so a bad market year or a good market year will affect you more with the traditional annuity plan like you currently have, less so in the cash balance plan. And it's, again, it's based on pay throughout the employee's entire career, so there's not those big bump-ups right at the end. You know, again, I mentioned the cash balance plan, a lot of the feedback we receive from the employees is that they like it because they can understand it, whereas the traditional annuity plans, the current plan, one of the proposals here, can be difficult to understand, absolutely. And then some of the other things on my conclusions here, I've already mentioned about some of the advantages of the DC plan, but one of the biggest ones, not to be underestimated, of course, is the removal of the liability from the balance sheet. Does anyone have any questions?
So just to clarify, what the manager is looking for us tonight, as you're, as you're asking our questions, we have three alternatives to explore the options that Mr. Cecilia presented, to modify some of these options or to not approve anything at all. So, they're going to be looking for some kind of direction at the end of our discussion. So, who has questions? Counselors of Perry?
The hybrid plan seems to have approximately the same benefit at the end of the, when the employer, employee retires, as does the, very little difference in benefit from the cash balance plan, am I correct?
In these scenarios that we designed, they are very similar. It really comes down to the plan design, but based on the two that I presented here, at the end of the day, they are very similar.
But the, the contribution by the town is less than the hybrid plan?
So, that's correct, based on this analysis for that.
Why is that?
Because, I'll try not to get too technical, it has to do with, let me try to, you know, one sec to try to make it clear. The traditional plan, you're establishing an annuity at age 65 for people to retire. When people are young, they have many years of discounting, and the way the plan structures are set up, and the way the benefits grow, that discounting is greater in a traditional annuity plan, which pushes that liability down initially, but then later on, it slopes up significantly before retirement.
By, what do you mean by liability?
So the liability is based on a person's accrued benefit and their age, and the, and the assumptions at hand. The way these plans are designed is a cash balance plan is designed to give you more now, to give, excuse me, to give the employee more now, but the benefit of doing that is less volatility right before someone retires. You don't have that big balloon payment at the end, you have a more structured and more predictable liability that will appear on your balance sheet with much, much less surprises. So there are pros and cons of each approach, but if we're, we're talking, you know, reduction of volatility, de-risking, the cash balance, although it may cost more upfront, saves you down the road.
Cash balance is subject to the volatility of the market, the financial market's also, isn't it?
It is, that is correct, but in my analysis, I had mentioned that you really target, your average annual asset return that you target is, in this analysis, is 4%, runs at the current plan at 7.5%. So what that generally means is, when you're meeting with an investment advisor, you say, my current plan's 7.5%, a lot of times, they'll be investing you more heavily in equities, which is adding that risk. Now, if you're telling them, sitting down and say, you know what, I really only need to do 4%, they can get you more in fixed income, so you certainly are susceptible to market fluctuations, but it's a more conservative investment mix, and therefore, on a down market, it should be significantly smaller down than the higher invested, than the plans that are more highly invested in equities.
Now, do I infer from what you've been saying that you tend to lean more toward the cash balance plan?
Honestly, it depends.
I'm sorry?
It depends, it depends. We, I would say, over the last 10 years, I would absolutely say that is true, because, again, less variability, employees understand it more, and you can budget it. There are certain situations where an annuity plan is better, but those aren't applicable to town plans, so if you're telling me for a town plan, the cash balance plan would be my first recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor Heath?
So does this, I mean, assuming 4%, is the town's contribution, is that right?
No, the 4% is the, what is earned on the beginning balance, and it will become, I'm going to pass out two things, I'm going to pass out one of our presentations on cash balance plan, so if anyone is having trouble sleeping, they can just pull it out, read it through, and, no. But more seriously, we're also going to provide an annual benefit statement that's going to show a breakdown of that.
All right, so, the town would contribute X amount of dollars for either the red or the blue, hybrid or the cash balance, they both basically end up at the same point. If the town capped out, I'm just going to throw a number out there, say the town caps out its match, because I understand 401Ks at 2%, would it be, would we be able to allow the employee to, are they matching that? So they match 2%, we match 2%, can they then do 4%, 5%? And we, the town contribution remains at 2, is that an option that gets put into this?
That's a good question. So, the answer is, you really come, like, what do you want to provide in total? And what we would do is, the match component can only be in a DC plan, in a 457, it can't be in a cash balance. The cash balance is just the amount that the municipal is putting in. One thing I will mention, that I forgot to mention before, also has to do with vesting, the entitlement to a benefit. Generally, under these plans, the traditional annuity plan can have a six-year vesting schedule, so someone has to work their six years before they're fully vested in that benefit. Cash balance plans can have a shorter term. In the private sector, cash balance plans are required to have a three-year vesting, but in a municipal, you can really set it to whatever you'd like, you could set it to four, or five, or six, or whatever it may be, but that is one thing that potentially a lot of employees like to see, saying that this will be my money sooner rather than later. Just a quick aside I wanted to mention.
Thank you. And which one, from the town's perspective, is like more stable for expense planning? So, we don't have to, this year, put in $100,000 extra, or next year, $200,000 extra, the year after, $50,000 less? What's more stable for the town's budget purposes?
So it's a great question, and I would say the cash balance plan. Now, but what I would say is that in year one, it'll be more expensive than the traditional annuity plan, or the career pay plan, but it's much more stable, the dynamics of the plan are much more stable, because you're dealing with each year of The dynamics of the plan are much more stable because you're dealing with each year of a person's pay. So even, you know, and so your question is, which is more predictable, the cash balance plan is. If I were just to try and sell you something, I'd say go with the career pay plan because it's cheaper now. But you're going to see that later on, it's going to catch up. Well, it has the potential to catch up. With the cash balance plan, again, it's more of a linear increase.
Mr. Burt wanted to say something, then Counselor Atwater.
Sure, just to mention, I tended to lean towards hybrid, just because that's what I'm familiar with. I'd want to learn more about the cash balance plan. I talked with our attorney who's here, Eileen. She represents many municipalities in collective bargaining negotiations. She hadn't seen another municipality that she's under do the cash balance plan. And whatever we do, we just have to make sure it's robust enough that we can negotiate through the retirement agreements to put that plan in place.
Well, it should be something that's beneficial to both the employee and the town.
Counselor Atwater.
When you first started talking about the cash balance plan being more expensive in the early years, and now you just commented on vesting, and I was thinking, wouldn't it make sense to do a 10-year cliff vesting in those first 10 years of cash balance plan? Because if people leave, you're recouping your costs. So what I really was curious, what are you finding in today's society or whatever, as far as vesting is concerned? I mean, I would think that the way people change jobs and so forth, you'd be better off delaying the vesting as long as you could rather than making it sooner.
That's a great question. So in the private sector, that's a different ballgame. The IRS has stricter regulations. But in free municipals, a lot of our municipals have much longer vesting schedules. We actually have some that don't become 100% vested until after 25 years. But it really comes down, there's no, I'm not here to make a recommendation, I'm here to just tell you that you have an option. So to your point, yes, it would cover you, excuse me, it would cover the town, you know, in those events that people leave before the 10 years. However, there's also a component of attracting good talent, which I'm not here to speak on. But there's a pros and cons of both approach.
Thank you.
Do any of the counselors have any further questions? Counselor Zepari.
Mr. Burt, who is managing our current retirement plan? The finances, the money in that retirement plan, and what's their rate of return?
I was going to get back to you with the rate of return, that's what I don't have with me, is what the rate of return's been. But I will get that to you for the next meeting. I don't have those numbers with me, I'll get to you for the next meeting.
And who's managing it?
SCI does our, what's the new name of Sage View, is the kind of our overseer of our finances. Then we have someone who does the more of the day-to-day investing. So we have a kind of financial advisor, Sage View, and then we have SCI that's doing the day-to-day investing.
SCI?
SCI, SCI, right. That's SCI.
Are they a local firm?
What town are they in? Pennsylvania.
They're what?
Pennsylvania, and then Sage View, he's in Connecticut, is it, where's that, or is he Massachusetts?
Sage View is, you're a national company.
But the local, our.
But our local person, just from, our local person was from Hunter. And he had gone to Sage View, and the town would determine that he, that we would go to Sage View with him as he went down.
Where's his actual office at, though?
Okay, so at this point, the manager is looking for some direction from us. If you'd like to explore the options presented, if you'd like to modify anything, or if you'd like to not approve anything at this point.
Just a point, the financial advisor, he's based out of West Hartford.
Who?
Our financial advisor is out of West Hartford.
And what's his name?
He's based out of West Hartford, his actual location.
I heard you say that.
Sage View is the company, was the new company, and Tim Burns is the actual financial advisor.
Tim Burns?
Yes.
And what's the name of his company?
Well, just, he's just joined, joining his company, it's now Sage View. We just approved the change. Sage View, S-A-G-E, View.
Perhaps you could email that information to Counselor Zepari. So if there's no other, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess my question is, as we look at these things, how does that affect the people that have already retired? Does this say the same?
It does not, it'd be only for new employees. So you can do the option of, let's say, a current employee, you could give the option, like many municipalities do, you adopt a hybrid, and those who aren't vested, you could give them an option of changing into a new plan. That'd be at their option only, would not be forced in any way. We actually went to the hybrid where I came from, in quite a few people selected to go into it because of the shorter vesting period. And so it was nice, then, rather than having them on the more expensive plan, they chose to go to a less expensive plan. But that would be optional, only the new people would be required. And it does, again, have to be negotiated through collective bargaining process.
So none of what we're talking about tonight, then, affects the original question that some of the retired people came to us with, about there being increases for them?
Well, the first discussion did. That would be that cost of $60-ish thousand per year to do a 2%.
The last item we discussed, the first informational packet that Mr. Cecilia passed out.
Okay.
So this is, this is something that we're thinking about for any future employees.
Okay, I understand that now.
So I would like to see Mr. Burt and Ms. Landry explore the options that have been presented to us. The rest of you in favor of that as well, or do you have other ideas?
I'm sorry, Patrice, I didn't hear you.
In favor of what?
You would like to see?
I said I would like to see alternative one, which is to explore the options presented.
I agree.
Meaning we'll come back to more information.
Yes, is there any objection to exploring the options presented? Okay, seeing none, that's the consensus of the council, then, is alternative one. And you are going to distribute more information to us now, or are you going to give it to Mr. Burt for later?
I can distribute, give it to Mr. Burt, and he can pass it along. Again, it's just additional graphs with different starting pay. And the other information is information just about our firm, as well as the cash balance presentation. The cash balance presentation, mainly the, what I wanted you to look at, if you will, along with the sample benefit statement, is just page one, which essentially explains how a cash benefit plan works.
True.
And this one-page exhibit that I'm going to send along is the sample statement. So just a one-page, simple exhibit that's provided to employees each year.
So this is, okay, very good. It's a separate one. And this is the one where you want us to read page one, correct?
Just page one. There is further information if you are curious, but page one, it just shows the balance and how it's brought forward each year, with interest and the town's contribution.
Counselor Zepari, are there extras? I believe Ms. Landry's waiting for her copies.
They're all in the corner.
No, I was waiting for them to all come around.
Oh, okay. I have a set that I was giving to Betsy for the minutes, so you can take those.
I'll get the one that's missing.
Okay.
These are the extras of this.
Counselor Heath.
For the town manager, when you come back after looking into this, it would be helpful to understand if you have recommendations for vesting.
So the, I'm trying to think when, the recommendations for changing to the 7.5% for adjusting the interest rate, which I'll need to talk with the retirement board on, and they only meet quarterly. I'm trying to think when the next one is, I think August. I'd want to discuss with them.
So you're going to want to discuss the vesting question with the retirement board as well? Is that what you just said?
The interest rate, changing the interest rate.
I think you asked about vesting, okay.
Right, I was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll give a recommendation on vesting.
Anything else?
If I could, I just want to say that all this is relatively new to me, but I want to say your presentation was far superior to what we've had in the past. I want to thank you very much for all this information.
Well, I appreciate everyone's time, I know it's late, but thank you for having me. And if there are any additional follow-ups, questions that you think of afterwards, you have my contact information, or you can discuss with Mr. Burt.
Go ahead, funnel to me, I'll compile, I'll give it a few days before I get back, and then Bob and I will send it.
Sure, excellent, great. So all the questions go to John, and then he can forward them to Mr. Cecilia. Thank you very much for coming out, we appreciate it, it was enlightening for us.
My pleasure, everyone have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we are on to items 5D and 5E. And Mr. Zagami is with us this evening, I believe, to talk to us about this. He's looking at us funny. So for item, do we need to, do you want to take a break now to gather, or are we ready to go ahead? About five minutes, okay, we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, we are back from recess, and we are on to items 5D and 5E. And these are requests to fill vacancies. The first is 2018-4, request to fill financial assistant 2, position in finance payroll. And Ms. Landry is with us.
I'm here once again. I have a financial assistant 2 who has worked for the town for 23 years, has given her notice of retirement in October. This position's primary responsibilities are payroll and pension processing. And I've provided, I believe you all have a copy of my justification for filling this position. And while payroll is very involved, it's not her only duty, she does other, several other duties within the department. Primarily, she does, balances all of the revenue that comes through the town. And all revenue from the town flows into the accounting department, except for the tax office revenue. There's several bank statements that she reconciles. She handles all of our returned checks, she provides information to departments, she does a lot of tracking. Although we have an automated payroll system, there is still a lot of manual work that must be handled in that department or by this position. So I'm here tonight to ask you to approve the posting and filling of this position.
I would just ask, Mr. Burt, I believe you had a discussion with the Board of Ed about potential sharing or cost savings. And if you could just brief everybody on how that went, please.
Sure, yeah, we went through, we met with the Board of Ed representatives, the business manager, the payroll, current payroll clerk, another person in that office, as well as all our staff, and Bob Zagami and Cindy Landry, and our current payroll person. I had sent previously to the council a list of all the duties of both the Board of Ed payroll person, as well as our payroll person. Pretty extensive, much of, even more than, at least, right now, about 25% of payroll clerk's time is spent on actual payroll. She collects and handles all revenue outside of taxes, and that's what a lot of her time is. I expect with a new person coming in, because you're going to have to get to know the collective bargaining agreements and everything else, it'll probably be more of a 50/50 thing for a while, but there's just not the, there's not the ability to spread that out to other employees. It just doesn't work out to try to share, to lose a position. Someone would have to pick up all that revenue work, we'd have to have a person anyways. But we went through it very thoroughly, spent quite a bit of time on it.
So then your recommendation is to fill this position?
It is.
Are there questions for Ms. Landry or Mr. Burt regarding this position? Okay, no formal action is required, so if there is a consensus of the council then to advise Mr. Burt to go ahead and fill this, is there any objection to that? Okay, so.
You can't do all this?
You have your.
I certainly would try.
So you have your direction for that position. So then we are on to 5E, 2018-5, request to fill municipal video technician position in the library. Thank you, Ms. Landry. Yes.
Do I make them, or, yeah, there's none. Shane, tonight's our last night with our, with our video technician, Shane. Tomorrow's his actual last day, he is going to spend the next six months hiking the Appalachian Trail. So he's taking advantage of his youth, so that's great for him. We'll really miss him, he's done a great job. We have two video technician positions. We have, well, I don't know if they're called, Sean's called the same thing. But anyways, we have two people that handle all the meetings, as well as doing, if anybody saw the new, they do a variety of projects besides covering the meetings for videoing. If you saw the economic development website video, that four-minute video, that was our staff that did that, Sean and Shane. We've discussed, and you'll see a cover sheet, looking at what would happen if you went, if you eliminated that position. Part of the problem is, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be able to do the extra jobs, we wouldn't have someone to back up Sean. So if he took the night off, if he was sick, we wouldn't have somebody to do the videoing. We'd have to go to more of a one-camera system to be ready to go. If he couldn't make it for some reason, we would have just a stagnant camera. The position cost is $40,000. Again, if we want to continue coverage of the meetings in the same capacity, we would need the second position. So that's a decision of the council.
Do you have questions or concerns? Counselor Zepari.
This is a new position, or we're not?
No, it's replacing one of the two that we have.
Are there any other questions or comments? So there's consensus then to have Mr. Burt fill this position as well?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much, and thank you, Shane, for all your work back there. We appreciate it, and we hope you have fun, and hope to take you, take some good pictures and post them for us. All right, so we are on to 5F, 2018-6, Calvin Burrows Field Fees. And we have Mr. Berry with us, and we have Mr. Grossman from Little League with us. Mr. Berry will be beginning our discussion. And then Mr. Grossman is available to answer any questions that you might have on behalf of Little League. Yes, if you, if you gentlemen, just make sure you speak into the microphone, that way Shane can pick it up for us.
Yes, yes.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Just to give you a little bit of background, we implemented tournament fees with kind of two goals in mind. One was to address the utility costs that were shifted from the Public Works Department to Parks and Recreation. They, because of budget cuts, they moved some of the utility costs were going to be incurred by the Parks and Recreation Department. It was something that we hadn't budgeted for. The other goal of setting up this tournament fees was to address improving fields. The maintenance budget for fields has been cut for the last 10 years, and we've had to put off doing work that really needed to be done. By charging these fees, we're able to do some of the work that we hadn't been able to do previously. The utility costs that we had to cover totaled $10,660. Now, all of those utility fees were not directly related to athletic fields. Some had to do with costs associated with running Esca Point Beach. And those, we've covered in a different account. Policy came about, about a year, well, it was a year ago. We were approached by a group of people that were interested in doing a lacrosse tournament. And as we got further into the lacrosse, planning for the tournament, they had a number of questions. And we realized that we really didn't have a good policy set in place. So we spent, you know, the next six months or so, kind of going through, developing a policy. I worked with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and in February, we adopted, we adopted a policy which had set fees and whatnot. You know, the practice of charging for access to different space is not uncommon. We, we charge folks to park at Esca Point Beach for the concerts. And that money is used to help offset the cost of the concerts. There's no cost to the, to the public through regular tax dollars. We charge folks to use pavil- We charge folks to use pavilions over at Sutton Park. And we also now charge food vendors to come into our park when they're selling, you know, whatever, is they selling ice cream or whatever. So, that's kind of the history of how we got here. John's here because he represents Groton Little League. They've proposed to do a, to host a tournament. And, you know, he's, I guess, wasn't aware or is concerned about the fees that we wanted to charge. I don't know, John, maybe you can speak a little better.
Sure. Well, thank you for inviting me tonight. Let me just say that Mark has been wonderful and does a great job with Parks and Rec. And has done, the Parks and Rec group has done an amazing job with us, working with us at Calvin Burrows share. And over the years, I've never had complaints about, about his staff or anything that's done at the field. It is true, and I was on Parks and Rec Commission up until January. So, I was part of that group that we discussed. I didn't realize, I did realize afterwards that it got passed in February. But we, we as a group, as Groton Little League, did put field lights on Calvin Burrows. And we, and it will be the town's, will be in the town's possession. So, we've raised $100,000 to make improvements, capital improvements on that field. And right now, the lights are on and they're playing ball right now for the first All-Star game for the 11/12s. So, you know, when this fee came about, and Mark has worked with me and has brought that fee down. But certainly, we've, let me back up just a tad. The Gene Sotera Tournament, which is, has been hosted in Waterford for 13, 14 years, decided that they would stop last year. So, when that came about, myself and a few of the other board members talked about hosting it in Groton. And it was kind of a rigmarole and process. And we were in and out and it got a little nuts. So, at the end, we decided to, Groton Little League decided to stay in and finish what we started. So, we're bringing, trying to bring that tournament back to us. Right now, I have six teams that are scheduled to play. Hopefully, I can get two more. So, that's slated for the middle of July. So, I am asking, trying to reduce that or nullify that fee for town kids, bringing, trust me, bringing plenty of teams into Groton, families into Groton to come to our businesses, go to our stores. Because that certainly happened over the years in Waterford for the Sotera Tournament after the games. So, it's, it's a great tournament. Hopefully, it will be a great tournament. But that's what we're asking. Those, any, any fees and things like that that we are raising, it's not going back into, you know, I'm volunteer. I don't get paid to do this. But it's going back into capital improvements. So, as Mark had said, basically, the fee is, is going in for capital improvements. But anything that we raise is going to scholarships outside for, for students graduating seniors that have played in Groton Little League or Groton softball. And then capital improvements for, for the field, for Calvin Burrows, as we've done so far in putting lights on the field.
So, before we start, I know people have questions. Just Mr. Berry. The original fee was going to be $1,800 and that would be to cover utilities, not capital improvements, correct?
No, the fee that we've set up was to cover both improvements on the field. And I'm not speaking to just Calvin Burrows Field.
Right.
I mean, I'm responsible, or the department's responsible for a number of different fields. And so, for example, Fitch Middle School, which is a field that we took, three fields that we took over a couple of years ago. Those are in dire need of work. We, every single season, get complaints from coaches about the condition of the field. And the goal of this, the tournament fees was, again, to set aside some money so that we could begin to make improvements to those fields.
So, it would be capital improvement?
Yes.
Okay. And then you, after discussion with Little League, then you dropped it to 600, correct?
We did. I think, I think right now, we're asking for 45 hours. And we've reduced the fee to 635, which I think comes out to $14 an hour.
Okay. I saw Counselor Parker.
And the original, I'm sorry, the original price was based on a field use fee that we set up years ago. And we've had groups, Electric Boat plays softball on our fields all the time. They pay the $35. Their Flag Football plays on our multipurpose fields and they actually pay $50 an hour. So, I think this year, we're going to generate close to $11,000. But we've also have the obligation of paying for the utilities, which reduces the amount that we're able to kind of set aside in order to make the necessary improvements.
Counselor Parker.
All right. This is for off-season tournaments?
Off-season, yes. Well, I mean, it's after All-Stars.
It's after All-Stars?
Right.
So, technically, the season begins, is it April?
April, yeah. We had April, 28th was opening day. So, depending on the weather.
Okay. And then July would be different, six different teams. It's not just Groton Little League?
It would be Groton Little League, 11/12s. And then we're talking outside towns, correct?
Towns coming in for the tournaments.
Right. Just like, right now, Groton is playing New London in the All-Star Tournament right now at Calvin Burrows.
But this will be from July on?
It will be about a week, about eight days.
And we'd be playing every day?
We're playing two games. Like, we'll start on, I've got to figure out the whole schedule because it's in flux with, certainly with All-Stars. But we'll start on like Wednesday, two games. Wednesday, I forget the date. It went July 18th. And then two, probably two games a night until the following, then one game on the following Tuesday and one game on the following Thursday.
And Calvin Burrows is the only field you play on for these tournaments?
Yeah, because it has, it's the only one that has lights. Right. So, we do a night, we do a day, do a 5 o'clock and then a 7:30 on, during the weekday. And then Saturday, we'd probably have four games, four games going on. Sunday, we would have three or four with a home run derby and then do a champion, kind of, then playoffs would start the following week.
So, you said the money for capital improvements, you guys do capital improvements at Calvin Burrows. Is this in conjunction with Parks and Rec? Because how does that work out?
Well, we would, we would. I mean, we, like I said, we went through and worked with Mark with, with our lights. And any, certainly any capital improvements that is needed, we would work with Mark on that. You know, like talking about fencing, you know, Jeff had talked about, Jeff Church talked about flipping the fences because the fences are pushed in from years of doing, hitting up against the fence. So, those fences are getting torn away. And so, flipping, things like that, whatever needs to be done.
Can I ask one more?
Yes.
All right. The other thing is, who takes maintenance and stuff for the fields, emptying garbages and stuff like that? Does that Parks and Rec?
Yes.
So, you guys have to come in on Saturdays and Sundays to do it? Or you guys come in Monday through Fridays?
Most of the work is done Monday through Friday. We do bring in staff on the weekends because we get a tremendous amount of trash in different places. And so, Calvin Burrows could be one of the sites that they pick trash up at.
Counselor Franco?
Sure.
And then Counselor Bob Gardner?
So, discussing off-season, do you play spring ball, summer ball, and fall ball?
Spring ball, so, yeah. I mean, summer ball is small, probably not many kids. But fall ball will start and we'll get a few teams playing on the field.
So, you play three seasons?
Yeah.
And just a, how much are you charging per team to play in this tournament?
$325.
$325. And you currently have six teams?
Yep. Well, five teams plus us. Obviously, we're not going to charge ourselves.
So, you're charging five. So, you're somewhere around maybe $1,500 right now?
Right.
And you want to do scholarships, put money back into Little League in the fields, and pay the $635 fee? Let me ask you. If you're doing spring, summer, and fall ball, do we normally have to clean up trash pickup regardless?
Yeah, we would be doing that. I mean, they, every year, they play summer ball and play into the fall.
So, we're normally picking up the garbage anyway? And are we normally, we normally maintain the fields regardless too?
Yes.
All throughout the year because you don't just stop mowing because it's a break in season?
Right, exactly. Yeah, we continue to mow. It gets dragged almost on a daily basis. And we monitor the grass conditions to see if we need to irrigate and things like that.
So, there's not really too much additional work? This is just something that you're going, you would like to make extra additional money to do other things because it's a tournament, right?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we looked at, one of the things that we looked at doing was actually like charging every single player. Now, this is not, I'm not talking about for the tournament, but you know, Groton Little League has 250 kids. We looked at, no, I'll stop picking on Groton.
That's okay.
We, Groton Youth Football, let's say, has 200 kids. We looked at actually, looked at charging kind of a player use fee. So, it would be like $10 for every kid that played. But we decided not to do that, kind of in favor of going in the direction of the tournament because more kids from out of town would be paying the fee versus kids from in-town. Does that make sense? You know, when you're hosting a tournament, you've got players coming in from, from other communities. We just felt like, okay, if we charge, charge them a tournament fee, essentially, the folks from out of town are paying, we're getting this kind of the same result, but not charging, not having to charge the kids that live in, that live in Groton.
And do you do travel ball tournaments as well?
Is that a question for me or for John?
No, for you. I mean, there's like travel ball, or at least soccer, or somebody that...
Yes, we have had, like War at the Shore has used our fields in the past. I think that's a tournament that's based out of Westerly or Rado, oh, Eastline. And I know they play in a, in a number of different communities. And they have utilized our fields and we've charged them the $35 to play on those fields.
Would it be hurtful to waive their fee and charge maybe more for out-of-town or travel ball? Because they're local, it's like our local?
So, what you're suggesting is if an outside group wants to come in and host a tournament in, in Groton, the fees would apply then, but not to a Groton youth organization that's hosting a tournament here?
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
Would it hurt? You know, it's, it's a little bit less money for us to do the things that we want to do. Now, I came back in February and said, hey, I need a little bit more money. And you guys, and you know, the council said, okay, we'll approve it. And the hurt goes away.
Counselor Bob Gardner?
So, within the policy in terms of the fee rate, is there, does Parks and Rec differentiate, you know, the, again, the travel teams from the, you know, local, local leagues, whether it's Little League or the soccer or have you?
Yeah, that is not something that we did when we set up the initial policy.
Is that something perhaps, you know, Parks and Rec would consider to maybe remediate this, I don't want to say conflict now, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly something we could consider doing.
Counselor Ober?
Well, I don't have any questions because I've kind of been involved in this going along. And I think that there's special circumstances with this particular situation. I know there were some bumps in the road, but I think that this group has done a great deal for a field in this town. Their investment in time gathering, the donations that were needed to put the lights up. And the fact that I'm pretty sure at the end of the games, they pick up all the garbage. And I'm sure they could drag the field if that was a problem. In Parketuck, when they finish a game, they pick up the garbage, they drag the field, and they mark it for the next one. And it's the teams that are doing it. So, we might look into some cooperative spirit that way, which I'm sure is there. But I really think it's kind of foolish that we're sitting here talking about this. I think that for this particular thing to start this year, it's new, but they've done a great deal to get ready for it. I would like to waive the fee and move on, have a good tournament. And then we have plenty of time to plan for the next one. And I would hope that this council could stay with me on my feelings.
Counselors of Perry?
I understand that you charge a fee for tournaments for every sport?
Yes. This tournament fee policy was not just directed at Groton Little League. It would be for any...
And how many times have you waived the fee for others, other sports and other teams?
Well, the policy was just developed and approved in February. So, we haven't, this is...
So, would you, you expect to be waiving the fee routinely for different sports groups? For instance, the, the soccer league might come up and they're having a tournament and they say, gee, you know, we get a lot of kids in town playing soccer and that's a good thing for the town.
Right.
We shouldn't have to pay a fee. How are you going to feel about that?
Well, it sounds like that's what the council is asking me to do, is to waive the fees for tournaments where the host is a Groton youth sports organization.
So, for every other team, for instance, for where the host for a soccer tournament is a Groton soccer team, they would be entitled to have the fee waived also?
It, it sounds like that's what the council is suggesting.
Excuse me.
He's letting him finish.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just wondering in equity, if we waive, waive the fee for one group, then we should waive the fee for all groups. It's only fair. The other groups are similarly doing something for the town and keeping the youth involved in sports. I think sports, by the way, I think getting kids involved in sports is about the best thing we can do. And I think it's very important. But I also think in fairness, if we, if we treat one group, for instance, if we treat Little League specially, then we have to treat all of them specially. Whereas if we're going to charge fees because we have to lower the, we have to cover the cost of some of the activities of the Parks and Rec Department, which I think is doing a great job in Groton, I think then everybody should have to pay the fee. It's like getting a tax exemption. I don't think I should have to pay taxes on my property. I mean, I think everybody else should pay taxes, but I don't think I should have to pay taxes. And I think it's only fair. And I'm going to come before the council at the next meeting and make a case for my not having to pay taxes. I, I just think, you know, we all have this burden of paying for the operation of the town's function. And one of the ways we pay for it is to collect a fee for tournament play. I mean, it's something that you've worked out. It's a system that you've worked out. Now, to waive it for one group doesn't seem appropriate. If you're going to waive it for one group, in all fairness, you have to waive it for all the groups. If you waive it for all the groups, you're going to lose that income to operate your department. And then if you lose that income to operate your department, either you're going to operate your department at a lower level or the taxpayers are going to have to pay for it. Now, each of these teams that's having a tournament derives a benefit for their sport. And they have vested interests. It's obvious that the Little League has a vested interest in that field. As I understand it, they have exclusive use of that field. And they put the lights in for their own purposes. They didn't put them in because they wanted to benefit the town. They put them in so that their kids could play baseball at night. Wonderful. I'm glad they had the money to do it. But I don't think that it's been a great public service to put the lights in. It's been a self-interested service. I also, so, those are the comments that I would offer to you and to the rest of the council. If we're going to recommend waiving the fees for one group, we have to waive the fees for all the groups in similar circumstances. Otherwise, I think we have to charge fees to all of the groups in the similar circumstances.
So, we have Counselors Heath, Atwater, and Overy again.
I respectfully disagree on this particular matter. I think we should be charging fees for groups and individuals and different events that come to use our fields. But in this particular case, the Groton Little League raised $100,000, as you mentioned, for the lights. These other groups, I suspect, are not coming in and raising money to do capital improvements. So, in this particular case, I would be in favor of waiving fees.
Counselor Atwater and then Overy.
Counselor Heath reiterated what I wanted to say very well, so thank you.
Now, has, did Counselor Schmidt wish to speak? You haven't spoken yet on this.
Oh, I agree with, um, Counselor Atwater, and Counselor Siperry, and, and Counselor Heath.
I don't think Atwater was agreeing.
Oh, you didn't agree?
No.
I was agreeing with-
You're agreeing over the big-
I'm agreeing that we waived the fee.
Oh, I agree with Counselor Heath and, uh, Siperry then.
Well, I think Counselor Heath was saying that he was agreeing, uh-
Heath was agreeing also that we should waive the fees.
Counselor Obray, did you wish to speak again?
Oh, was he?
Yes.
Did you wish to speak again?
Yes. You know, uh, I, I just can't believe some of the things that Joe's saying here tonight.
Counselor Obray, please, please keep your comments pertinent to the topic and not attacking a counselor. Please don't attack another counselor.
All right. Let me think for a second how I want to say this, then.
You can talk about the issue without talking about the person.
I don't even think we should be, I won't do that.
Thank you.
I don't even think we should be here discussing this tonight. It's ridiculous that it ever get to this point. To me, one of the things that I look at in everything that we're doing is economic development. This is only a small, little piece of it, but it's economic development. We can have a tournament in this town. I don't believe we have any others. If we do, I'm not familiar with them. But I think that this has grown out of proportion. I don't think we're setting a standard for the future. I think we're recognizing a group that has worked very hard, maybe for their own benefit, but I think the town is benefiting. There will be other times that that field can be used when the lights are on. It will be used more. And certainly, I'll get out, pick up the damn garbage, and rake the field. But, I mean, this is ridiculous, and I would hope this council could see the benefit of being behind them. Both of you, next year, we've had time with these fees. They'll anticipate them. You go forward, but I don't believe tonight, we should do anything but encourage other people to raise money to do improvements to what we have. And if we don't waive this, we're saying to people, don't bother to do things for Groton because nobody's going to say thank you.
Um, we have Counselor Baumgardner and Parker that also wish to speak, but I haven't spoken yet, so I'm going to jump in now. Um, so, the whole point of the fee structure that was implemented by the Parks and Rec Commission was to offset the costs that were being assigned to the Parks and Rec Department. So what I would say is, can you get the number, the, the amount of money that you're going to be expected to, um, to cover, and let us know that? Because then we should keep that in contingency if possible. If not, we should be looking for a fourth quarter transfer, because they were counting on certain funds coming in to cover their costs that we did not allot for when we did our budget. So, whatever the pleasure of the council is, you, you should not hold Mr. Berry harmed for, um, our choices. So just, whatever we want to do, keep in mind that he still has the cost, no matter what you decide to do. So Counselor Baumgardner, and then Parker.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm not sure if it, it's smart to assume that we necessarily have lost that revenue. I'm not sure, correct me if I'm not wrong, Director, but did Parks and Rec anticipate that this tournament would take place before the budget, budget process, or in terms of your budget calculations?
No, we, we were not expecting this tournament to take place.
So would it, would, I mean, would it technically have to be offset, or?
Well, that's not what I meant. He's, the, the cost has been shifted from Public Works to his department. That's the cost I'm talking about.
But in terms of the revenue associated from the actual tournaments, so the 1,800, which was then reduced to 600, was that revenue specifically for that tournament? I know you assume that you have various tournaments, whether it's travel or what have you, but, um, did you factor in that specific tournament into your calculations in terms of estimated revenue to, again, offset that?
No, because our estimated revenues were done way before this tournament was planned.
Counselor Parker? I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, um, a few more things. I'd like to align my, myself with, um, Counselor Obray's previous statement. Specifically, though, um, on the issue of the utilization rate of parks, um, what would you say right now the breakdown is of the utilization of, say, you know, again, the local leagues as opposed to the, any, I don't want to say for profit, but say a travel, uh, travel team ranging from baseball to lacrosse, so all the fields within the Parks and Rec portfolio?
And you're speaking just to youth sports organizations, or?
Just utilization across the board.
Oh, okay. Well, I would say youth sports organi, we, we have kind of two primary users, and that would be the high school uses a lot of our fields for lacrosse, soccer, um, and then that may be 15 to 20% of the time, and then the balance is used by youth sports programs. And then we do have, like, the adult groups, I guess I'm getting up over 100% now. We do have the adult groups that use, uh, that use our fields. Primarily, it's, uh, electric boat, um, adult programs that are, are using our fields.
And then, uh, travel ball, say, in the baseball fields?
Less than 5%.
Well, I only ask because, again, kind of that offset, if we are looking to make an offset, if, down the road, if we, again, look to, um, maybe making an adjustment to that, that fee schedule, so that perhaps some of the, the turn, um, you know, for-profit, uh, travel teams perhaps pay, um, a little, you know, actually pay that fee as opposed to youth sports, um, or maybe even a higher percentage, so that it can, again, it, it offsets, so, uh, you know, you don't have a, a deficit within that, that maintenance budget, so, and the utility budget, obviously, which you now have, uh, have to worry about, used to be under, uh, Public Works.
Right.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you.
I don't, I know everybody's a little on different sides on this. My question would be, if we waive the fee, would you guys be poss, possible to do the 600 next year and put it, I'm talking to Mr. Grossman here. If that would be a problem, if you get eight teams or more than eight teams, you're making a lot of money. I know you're putting it back in, but the capital improvements, I'm trying to figure out which capital improvements are you working on? So, besides the fence, and then you do scholarships, so how many scholarships do you give out?
We'd probably do two this year, I hope.
Two?
So two $500, so we're talking $1,000.
Okay. And you've raised money before, so you've done this a couple of times, but this is the first time you're doing a tournament, you're-
Correct, yeah.
Hosting a tournament.
Mm-hmm.
So, depending on how well it goes this year, next year, would you be willing, would the group be willing to pay the $600, not the $1,800, if we can figure out a way of doing a fee schedule, like you said, for Groton teams? And then anybody else coming in and doing a different fee schedule? Would you guys be willing to pay the $600? Because if other teams are doing it, already paying a fee, and we waive it this year, and you guys, I know you guys have done a lot with getting the flights, and there's many different groups who helped raise money for the lights. I just want to know if you guys would be able to do that.
Right. I certainly can't speak, I have a board just like, just like you, and I certainly can't speak, um, to approve something next year where possibly I won't even be involved. So-
So if you could bring that to them, then?
Yes, I would, I would.
Because I think this is where, if we waive it, and then next year you come back and say, can you waive it again? I, I don't, me personally, I don't feel it's fair to keep waiving it, but-
Mr. Burt, um, if it is the desire of the council to waive this, how do we go about this? Because do, can, do we direct you to direct Mr. Berry to waive the fee? How does it work?
Counselor, I'll turn it thoroughly on the fees. Then you can, you could just do a motion to waive.
Okay. So if we took that up now in Cow, does then that also have to go through Town Council?
Yes.
Okay. So we would, someone would need to make a motion to waive the fees if that so is the desire of the council? It would have to be voted, it would have to be voted by majority here in Cow, and then it would have to go through the next Town Council meeting, which is not until July 3rd, correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion.
You're going to need to commit it to writing for, for them, I think. Can you just jot something down? You can say it, and then you'll just have to write it, because, um, they'll need it for the record.
You haven't seen my spelling.
Conrev will write it. Say, go, start talking.
Okay. I would just like to make a motion for what was previously said, that we waive the fee for this year.
For Groton Little League? Correct? That's what you're talking about? Not just, not in general, just for the specifics and?
Correct.
Okay. So, what do you have?
Second. Uh, Counselor Obray makes a motion to waive the fee for Groton Little League for this year.
Okay, so, so moved by Obray, seconded by Heath. Any discussion on Counselor Obray's motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed? Three opposed? Opposed, hold on. Perry? Schmidt? Parker? Any abstentions? So that passes six to three to zero. So then that will have to go to the Town Council, um, to be voted on in the Town Council. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Thank you, Mr. Grossman.
Thank you.
That sounds so silly when we're sitting here, isn't it?
5G, 2018-7, option of an ordinance to establish hours of operations for BYOB establishments. And I believe, is Mr. Reiner with us, or is Mr. Burt handling this? Okay, Mr. Burt is handling this. Um, and do we need, let's see. You're looking for just a recommendation from us to?
Right. And I do have some comments on the hours. I like, motion first, and then we can discuss.
Okay, so we are on, are we on Counselor Franco or Counselor Heath to make the motion for 2018-7? Adoption of, sorry, Counselor Heath?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance to establish hours of operation for BYOB establishments.
Moved by Heath, is seconded by Atwater. Mr. Burt?
As I mentioned, when the ordinance was introduced, the 11 to 11 time slot was a kind of a placeholder for more discussion. One thing we've found out is that there is a brunch place that has a brunch BYOB that starts at 10:00 a.m., so I would recommend moving, changing it from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. to accommodate that. And then I know there's some concerns over the, whether 11:00 p.m. is the appropriate ending time in the night.
Is that your only comment at this point?
Yes.
Because of the whole opinion of, so, do counselors have, um, discussion on this? Counselor Atwater, Obray, Siperry?
Did we amend the motion?
Counselor Atwater? Not yet. Atwater, Obray, Siperry? Please.
My question was in, in, uh, section four, C and D. Consumption of alcohol, liquor by visibly intoxicated persons shall be prohibited at these establishments, and consumption of alcohol by persons underage. When I was in Massachusetts, there was a, a law that said that the last establishment that served someone who was intoxicated could be held liable. Is that, have any application here at all?
I'm not sure. I'd have to talk to our attorneys to, unless I lean up, is it offhand?
That's actually, I think you're talking about grand shop, where they're actually serving alcohol, and this is, is the establishments aren't serving the alcohol. Whether or not there could be some separate liability, I suppose it's possible, but it's not under the act that, that you're referencing. There's a similar rule here.
Counselor Obray, and then Siperry?
Um, my, I have a couple of questions, is, um, but one being is, how do, how are these enforced? Does the police department enforce these, this?
Yes, and, and the chief, and deputy chief have both been involved with the drafting.
Right, I, I would say, okay. And the other thing I was wondering about, where on B, where it says no gambling, lotteries or gambling devices are permitted at BYOB establishments? I know some of the church fundraisers that I go to, it's a BYOB, and, and, um, I'm wondering how that would affect their ability to, uh, do their fundraising.
So for example, they had, they had the permit to do the raffle or something like that, is that what you're speaking of?
Yeah.
Yes.
Which se, can you tell me which section you're referring to?
I'm sorry?
It's 4B.
4B, okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Patrice.
Do you have the answer?
I'd want to have.
Well, I, I do have a comment to make on that, because I, I questioned the same thing, but if you look above, versus BYOB establishment offer to bring, bring your own bottle, means any business facility such as a dance hall, club, restaurant, lounge, meeting room, or a, a association, not licensed by the state. And I wrote a question to myself saying, church, because church wasn't mentioned, and I didn't know if that was specifically let out, left out, so that it wouldn't affect the situation that Counselor Obray is, is referring to.
It does say business facility.
No, I would consider church being a business facility.
No, that's what I mean, it would not. I don't think a church would be a business facility.
I don't think, I think that question was actually asked during the drafting of it.
So it would not, to answer Counselor Obray's question, this would not impact churches that had legal raffles?
Right, and I, I don't know that they would really, do you think that they would actually fall outside of these hours?
I beg your pardon?
Do we think that they would actually fall outside of these hours?
Past 11?
No, it's not a matter of going late.
Yeah, definitely further the hours.
It, it's a matter of they have these functions, and they are BYOBs, and at the same time, that they've gotten, uh, state permission to do whatever they're doing to, you know, to raise money. And I'm just a little concerned about, we might be infringing on, on their ability.
I don't believe there's any concern with that. I can certainly get back to the town manager, but I don't believe there would be any concern.
Okay.
Counselors of Perry?
Uh, I would like to move that we amend the, uh, ordinance, uh, section four A, to read, no alcoholic liquor may be consumed on the premises of such BYOB establishes, establishments between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m., uh, rather than as presently read between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 11:00 a.m.
And the, the rationale is to accommodate the, um, local BYOB establishment that has the brunch in this, on weekend mornings?
Those that are serving brunches that want people to bring their own mimosas.
Okay, so, I'm not sure if this need requires a formal vote, but, um, move by Siperry, seconded by Parker to amend, so we'll be voting all at the end on the whole amended motion. Counselor, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Heath?
Should we go ahead and make an amendment to exempt churches while we're at it?
Do, um, let's, since the attorney's here, let's ask her opinion, or is this something that we could get back to? If, if you find it is necessary, could it be amended at a later time?
Just consider this, maybe there's an overzealous officer who isn't on the police force at the current time, and in the future, it could be on the force and create that issue.
I don't like the other part, yeah, no. If you're, if you're accepting them out, do I think you can accept them out? I think you can accept them out specifically, like, uh, I, I don't think they're covered to begin with, but I guess, just to contemplate, what impacts would that actually have? What were you trying to protect, again?
Myself?
Right, what were you trying to protect with the churches?
Uh, what other churches do fundraising? And their fundraising, it's, they become BYOBs. And they also, at the same time, have some business capacity because of the fact that they've gotten a permit from the state to do whatever it is they're doing to raise the money. Might be a raffle, you know, a giveaways, whatever it might be. And I just wanted to make sure that we weren't tying their hands to be able to do that.
I guess I'm, I'm having a hard time picturing how that ties their hands, so maybe I'm missing the-
It's a raffle or lottery.
And it goes after 11:00.
And it goes after 11:00.
Counselor Parker?
No.
The way, the way it's written right now, you can have no gambling in a BYOB establishment. So the concern is that a church is going to be considered a business according to the ordinance is written. Counselor Parker is next.
Right. If they're doing bingo's-
If they're doing bingo's, raffles, or bizarre type things from 11:00 p.m. to 11:00 a.m., has to be, it's not the state that does it anymore, it's per town, that just changed back in January of this year. So, the town police departments are the ones who authorize them having bingo's, raffles, et cetera. So, they would know if the business is, it's 11:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. I don't know if they'll be hosting that type of event, but I don't think it clashes because churches are normally exempt from some things. I'm just taking.
So, let's hear from them, and then we have Zeperry, and, oh, Zeperry already talked, so we'll go Franco and then Zeperry. Let's let Mr. Burt fill us in.
You want to do that first? I think we'll come back to me. She, Eileen didn't actually draft this, another attorney did. My opinion is to strike that section on the no gambling, et cetera, because if I get anything elsewhere, but we're going to.
Oh, okay.
Since someone else researched this, she's going to stay, she can.
Okay, so Counselor Franco and then Zeperry again.
All right, so my concern would be if a group, or a wedding, or people fundraising, possibly rented out Groton Long Point Yacht Club, which is the casino, or the Mystic Art Museum. I also have Avery Point, the Branford House, the Ram Island Yacht Club, Shannon Classic Yacht Club, Firehouse Community Rooms. Places like this would also be considered a BYOB. So, if you're having a wedding, and we put in 11 o'clock stop time, I would like to move that to 12:00, so at least for people that are having fundraisers at these places or weddings, it doesn't end at 11:00 a.m., 11:00 p.m. Yeah, the Branford House, which is, is it Avery Point? Oh, that doesn't count because it's in the city, I'm sorry. I also had the concern of the gambling, the lottery with fundraisers at any of those locations, not just churches, because I wasn't sure if a lottery was also considered a I had attended a fundraiser at a BYOB recently, and I don't know, that would have been against the rules here. So, I'm looking also to change that to maybe 12:00 o'clock. I think there wouldn't, I don't think there would be any harm till moving it to 12:00 p.m.
12:00.
Or a.m. To close at midnight, to end at midnight, and to begin at 10:00 a.m.
I would accept that amendment to my amendment.
So, was that a formal move to amend, Counselor Franco?
Yes, please.
So, you want to change it to 12:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m.?
Right.
For, for 4A, we'll read between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m.
Correct.
So, that was?
I would like to also possibly as?
Well, hold on, hold on. So, that's Franco and Zeperry, in case they're looking for paper trail. Okay.
And possibly scratch 4B, as per Mr. Burt's.
May I, may I make an alternate suggestion to that?
Yes.
To amend the amendment, I would agree with your amendment that it be from 12:00 midnight until 10:00 a.m. that no alcohol be served. But I would add a 4F, if you will, and say that charitable organizations, charitable and religious organizations are exempted from this ordinance, provided that they do not have BYOB activities more than six times per year.
I second that.
Zeperry and Parker, to add a 4F, that would read something to the effect of, and Eileen's not here, charitable and religious organizations are exempt if they host less than six such fundraisers per year, or six such events per year?
I think if a church is having a BYOB party every other night, they should be, they're in the business with everybody else. But if they have one every other month, it's not really a big profit-making thing, it's not their, they're not in the business of doing that, they're having special fundraising parties, and that would do it.
Okay, I'm seeing that there's disagreement on that particular point, so Atwater and then Heed.
The only thing, what Counselor Franco said about churches having weddings, certainly a lot of churches would have more than six weddings a year, so you're really limiting that possibility.
So, would you be, would you be agreeable, Counselors of Parry, if we took out the quantifier? If we took out the number of times, just charitable and religious organizations are exempt?
That would be fine.
Counselor Heed. Well, we have to, we have to work this through, this is all new, so everybody gets to talk.
Three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning, the church can still serve alcohol, or serve BYOB, because they'd be exempt from the entire thing the way that's presented, and I would disagree with that.
Be careful, we won't be able to read.
So, so F is, Counselor Zeperry's latest amendment has not been agreed to by the full council as of yet, and it looks like they haven't answered, so. Go ahead, please.
The other attorney wasn't available, but we were just discussing the, you know, charitable and religious organizations are exempt from this ordinance, that would likely be fine. Thing is, because we've discussed it here, you can make the change next week if we find out further information next week, so you can alter it if need.
So, as long as the bulk of an ordinance is agreed to by the Cow, it can be amended at the council?
What you can't do is throw out something that was never discussed, I believe, outside of the public.
Yeah, I would see, because you have a two-step process.
Okay, so let's, well, why don't we finish, because we may come to, maybe somebody else will come up with some idea, and it will come to consensus. Counselor Heed, I'm sorry, Counselor Franco, then Heed.
All right, I have two items here. So, in response to the charitable, charitable and church organizations exemptions, I also worry that some people have just become charitable organizations to be able to be exempt from this.
People don't do that, Rachel.
So, that's one of my concerns, and then also, I want to clarify, which I had talked, I had spoken, well, emailed with Mr. Burt about, where the penalties, where it says any person violating any provision of this section shall be subject to fine of $250. And I want this to be clarified, whether this is a person who is in violation, or if it is a business in violation, and how the wording pertains to that. So, does the business get fined, or does the person who's?
And he had, Mr. Burt had a response to that, that addressed your concern.
Right. I talked to Brian, the attorney that drafted that, and under person, you could leave the leeway of it being against the person or the establishment, because we definitely want to continue to have the ability to fine the establishment if they're not following the rules.
So, that's actually the definition of person is under a separate section of the ordinance?
Okay. So, person is defined elsewhere, and it can mean either an individual or the entity that's hosting?
It's defined broadly.
Okay. So, so we're back to trying to figure out what to do with Counselor Zeperry's notion of charitable and religious organizations. What's the consensus on that? Do we want to leave something like that in, where they would be exempt? Counselor Parker?
Just a question.
I'm sorry, I forgot, I forgot to go to Counselor Heed.
You want, go ahead. Okay, just real quick question. Were we thinking about the charitable and religious organizations in regards to no gambling and lottery, if they're hosting a fundraiser? So, can we put, instead of putting it under F, if they're doing it under B? Because it's, that's what we were originally talking about, is them doing, if they were gambling, or doing a lottery, or, well, and using gambling devices. Wouldn't that pertain to B, because we were trying to get the churches not to be charged, to be in trouble for it?
I agree. I think that makes sense.
Is that what we were going to? Is that what the intention, I believe?
My intention is to exempt the church and the charitable organization, the ordinance altogether, so they don't have to worry if they're serving bring your own bottle at a time when they're having a silent auction or something of that sort.
Counselor Heed.
As I understand it, the chief is the one who led the charge of this ordinance, so I would like his input, it can be written or whatever, I don't think he needs to come here, but on any of the changes that have been discussed tonight.
And I wouldn't say he led the charge initially, well, it's a council member that did, but, and then, but, yeah, that's fine, I'll look at that. I do, by the way, have that other ordinance, if you want to hear the actual definition of person?
Yes, please.
Are you interested in that? The term person means natural person, joint venture, joint stock company, partnership, partnership association, club company, corporation, business trust organization, or the manager, leasing, agent, servant, officer, or employee of any of them, and includes all political subdivisions and governmental agencies, and every department of such political subdivisions, together with every officer and employee thereof while working in the course of his employment, so it's very broad, it covers everything.
Oh.
It covered individuals and?
The customer.
And employees, and businesses.
So, Counselor, what's the definition of a business? So, is a church included in a business? You just defined person for us, so if the, if?
Here's the definition, if you want it.
Yeah, please, that's what the point, because if church is not included, then none of, all of this is moot, and we can just forget it.
It's pretty broad, I think, at the end. The term business includes businesses, professions, trades, and occupations, and every kind of calling, so they look very broad.
Trades and occupations, a calling.
Kind of a calling.
So, it didn't say customers, did it? Or patrons?
Under person.
Said individuals.
But it had every natural person, so, every person.
Okay. Do you want to delay a vote on this until we hear back about the whole church issue? Is that the consensus of the council, just to delay taking any action on this at this point? So, we'll just carry this over? Is there, is there anybody pushing to get a definitive answer on this this evening? No? So, then we'll just delay this, and we'll take this up again at the next Cow?
Sure.
Okay. And I don't believe we have to make any kind of motion to do that, we just won't take the action on it, correct?
Do we have to put it on to the next?
Next Cow.
Mr. Burt, do we need any kind of action to have this carried over to the next Cow?
I think just table it down.
Not table, we were told, we were instructed never to table.
No, postpone to a time definite.
Postpone to a time definite, so there's a motion to postpone this to a time definite from Counselor Heed.
Second.
Seconded by Parker, to the time definite would be?
The next committee of the whole meeting.
Next committee of the whole. All those in favor of postponing to the next committee of the whole, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, so, so this will be delayed until we get answers on the church question, and until the chief has a chance to take a look at the already proposed amendments that we discussed. Thank you very much. Setting the referendum date informed the question for charter revisions.
Would you like to back one page?
To recommend a resolution setting the referendum date and form of the question for charter revision, I so move.
Second.
Moved by O'Bree, seconded by Heed, and if you turn the page from where Counselor O'Bree just read, the question has been drafted and is here, this is the recommended language from the town attorney. Shall the town charter be amended and revised, all is set forth in November 2017, final report of the 2016 Town and Groton Charter Revision Commission, and as on file with the town clerk. So, that is the form of the question that we are going to move forward for the November ballot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, so moved unanimously. So, we are on to 2018-9, and this is a merit property update, and we will be going into executive session once we have our vote, but Attorney Duggan will be reporting out something at the end of executive session, if, I assume, the reporter would like to hang out for a bit and get what her comment is. So, Counselor Atwater, would you please pass over, would you please read the motion to go into executive session?
I hereby move that the members of the town council, town manager John Burt, school superintendent Mike Granier, Board of Education President Kim Watson, Public Works Director Gary Schneider, Town Sustainability Project Manager Rick Norris, Permanent School Building Committee Chairperson Robert LaFrance, and Town Attorney Eileen Duggan, go into executive session pursuant to General Statute, Section 1-200, Prens 6, Prens V, for the purpose of discussing potential or pending claims and/or litigation concerning construction of the middle school of the merit property.
I said at the beginning, I hereby move.
Okay. Moved by Atwater, seconded by Heed. All those in favor of going into executive session as per the reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so we are in executive session at 9:07.